Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. For the record, this is Newark City School District Board of Education regular meeting being held at the Rosemont Administrative Offices 6:30 PM, December 14, 2015. Jeff, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Carr?
Here.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
Ms. Nickam?
Here.
Mr. Bligh?
Here.
Mr. Blowers is absent at this time. Form of four.
Okay, thank you. Now, our junior ROTC color guard will present the colors and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And I think you were speaking too, aren't you?
Yes. Color guard, attention! Carry colors. Forward, march! Mark time, march! Left turn, march! Color guard, halt! Present arms!
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Order, arms! Right turn, march! Forward, march! Color guard, halt! Color guard dismissed.
Students, thank you. He often said, he'd be able to ask me various questions, that the one thing I think I'm proudest of in my time in the school board is getting this program started. It's just great. You've got the floor.
All right. Okay, I'm the commander of the junior ROTC unit this year, and this is our color guard commander. We both play a very much part of the unit, obviously. Let's see. This year is the biggest unit we've ever had. We have 240 cadets, so we're actually the biggest in Ohio now. Let's see. A few weekends ago, we had the Columbus game. We've had many games this year, last year, or past two years. So our, our, um, public city has been a lot this year. We've been out in public a lot representing the unit and during school. I think why so many kids are joining now, especially this, this past year by we grew so much, is they've, a lot of kids in the younger schools have really seen how, how, how much we are in the public, how much we represent the community, how, uh, how much of a family our unit is. I, I just think that the kids from these visit the middle schools and when they see us on television, uh, when we see what we do within our community, like whether it be the wreath ceremony or a Bengal game, uh, they just, they, they want to be a part of it and see what, be a part of what we do. So...
Where all have you personally gotten to do this, other than at the Newark Ball Games?
Uh, we did this at, uh, the Columbus Crew Games, uh, basketball stadium, Bengal's game, and then do smaller things like, you know, the Salvation Army, we do a lot of things for them. Uh, last weekend, we did the replay ceremony. We used to cross America. Uh, can you think of any others?
And I think that we just, Ms. Sharpe, we just got asked to do a Blue Jackets game, right?
And then, um, did they tell them if I were called?
Yeah, we got a call back from them. Sadly-
That's one I'm chaperoning. Did that?
I'm already there.
I'm already there.
Sadly, um, we didn't schedule enough time. It takes a year, so if we scheduled this year, then we could possibly have one next year, but they were talking about like closer tracks, like the Indianapolis Raceway, like Pocono and places like that. We just want to go to Pocono, just to say Pocono.
Well, you left out two weekends ago, you were at the state football playoffs. And, uh, you did two games on Saturday in front of 14,000 each game.
Yeah, I actually commanded one of those. It was, it was really fun just to be in such a big arena and, you know, people move, it's such a, such a big area, it's an incredible feeling. So...
I don't know about you guys, but I just like super excited when I got that pass. I was like, this is mine, this is mine, I'm gonna hang this up and keep it forever. Just got so excited.
That's good.
What are your names?
Oh, um, I'm, uh, Cadet Colonel Chloe Bedford, and this is-
Cadet Major Christian Shelton.
Good stuff.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you as a back too. Thanks, Ms. Sharpe.
Okay, any resolutions or recommendations?
Okay, we have one. He may be showing up slightly, but when he gets here, a new man, we recognize him. And then, with us two, we just found out the student leadership group. Mrs. Williams? Can you hear in the back? If you would, please, state your, tell us who, tell the board who you are and what grade you're in, please.
All right. My name is Alyssa Pipkin, I'm a senior.
My name's Erin Rabel, and I'm a sophomore.
My name's Gavin Rosen, I'm a sophomore.
So, okay. We are part of the youth in government, ran at the YMCA. I am president this year.
I'm vice president.
And this is her first year, um, in our, our delegation. Um, so every year, we prepare, um, all school year long to go to the state house in April and present amendments and, um, I, this year, am on the judicial branch, and so I'll be saying whether it's constitutional or not, like different crimes, and arguing back and forth with that. So it's a pretty awesome program. Not a lot of people know about us, so that's why we're here tonight. Uh, so if you guys have any questions, um, that's awesome, we would love to answer them. We have meetings twice a month at the YMCA, um, the first and third Wednesday of every month, um, 3:45 to 4:45. If anyone wants to join, we would more than welcome you. Yes, it's for high school. Um, we do have, they just started this year at a middle school program, uh, but just because we're such a small delegation and we're so new, this is our third year, uh, we just don't really have the right resources to include middle school just yet.
Didn't you say you're going to state house? I'm sorry.
April 16th through the 18th is the conference this year.
Oh, okay.
What's the poster to get there?
Um, this is from last year. Um, we made this when we got back. Um, so this is our delegation. Um, this is, last year was our biggest year, um, we had, I think, 16. Um, so we actually got to have two chaperones this time. Last time, we could only have one. Um, and then, uh, Morgan Baldwin and Heather Hoddinger, uh, were in our delegation, and so her, their dad, Judge Baldwin, and Jay Hoddinger, were able to join us a couple times, so we have all of the people who have important parents in this picture.
They're all important.
Well, um, and then this is the entire, um, youth in government, YMCA youth in government. So this year, they're expecting over 600 students at the conference. So it's pretty cool, you should go and like take over the state house, it's a lot of fun.
That's neat.
There's gotta be a comment there, but we'll be nice to Jay's cohorts. Could you stay in charge?
Now, are you all doing this because you're interested in pursuing political careers, or is it just something to learn about how the government works?
Uh, a little bit of both. Um, I don't necessarily want to be a lawyer, but, um, I think arguing with people is fun. Um, but also, it's a good way to see like how the government works, like on a little bit of a lower level, rather than like actually being thrown into it.
They argue well?
Yes.
Other?
Do you guys want to be older, different in law? I'm kind of interested a little bit of the law, I'm not kind of sure yet, but it's sometimes interested me, so that's why I joined this year.
Um, I'm also interested in law. I'm kind of going between a few different things, like astronomy, law, on different ends of a football field, but they're close.
I'd say some of our lawmakers are in space, you're right. You're on the right track there.
But it's a fun way to kind of have a voice as a youth. Crazy laws that you wouldn't think were made up by youth, uh, actually, like real laws come of youth in government. Right turn on red in Ohio was first proposed as a youth in government bill, and then an actual legislator adopted that one. White edges on the highway, that was originally a youth in government bill. Something with railroads. Was it youth in government? I don't really remember what that one was, but, so they're like real things if a legislator decides to adopt your bill. So if you guys have any questions, you can find me in the hallways if you were concerned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did see another special guest came in the back. He's one of the shyest young men we have in our district for, he's very modest. Owen, would you please come forward? If you'd please, I know you have guitar lessons coming up, so-
Oh, yeah, I do.
If you would tell them who you are and what you accomplished this fall, please.
Oh, okay. This fall, I went across country, and this year, I made it to the state meeting. That was pretty, that was pretty fun. And I went to go out to Midwest Regionals, which is like up in Kinnon, Wisconsin. And I did pretty good. And, well, I beat the junior record for the school. I beat Toby Stein, which his was like 15:54, and then I got 15:40, I beat like 14 seconds.
And what place did you get in the state?
Uh, 15th, I got 15th in the state.
So you got on the podium?
Yeah, I got on the podium.
Which is awesome.
16 people on the podium. Yeah. I hope to win it next year though, so-
Well, we hope you do. And I'll tell you, the beats, I've been, you're a good leader, and you're very quiet, but-
I don't think I'm quiet, but okay.
I see that, but I wanted to bring in and, and recognize you for your accomplishments and, and tell you thank you for being a good leader in our, our building and our cross-country team.
Oh, thank you.
I've talked to your dads, and you know how many Division One runners there are in state of Ohio, and to get on that podium at the state meeting is something special.
Yeah.
And so we're looking for big things out of you next year, so thanks for being who you are, Owen.
And when he mentions the time, for those out there who don't understand, that's 3.1 miles he's running in 15 minutes and 40 seconds. That's like three five-minute miles piled on top of each other. That's hard.
Yeah, it's hard.
If you keep working, you'll beat your dad's heart. I gotta laugh out a little bit at that.
The other thing Owen didn't mention is that on the way to the state, he won the OCC for Division One.
I did that too.
Another ceremony run, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Great, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, yeah. Yes, um, we have a gift for our outgoing board member tonight. Mr. Harden and Kurt, I know I speak for all of us, all 800 employees here in the district and 5,400 kids, students here, but we so much appreciate your time and effort. I know personally, I've grown a lot from a leadership role just by being around you the last four years, and I know our team has, has really, we really respect you and really appreciate everything you've done for the district, and, uh, we're sorry to see you go, but we certainly understand your, your work commitments, and so, um, just a small token here-
Thanks, sir.
-our appreciation. So thank you.
Ask you for me to speak, child. Okay, made a few errors. We'll move on to communications from the floor then. If anyone would like to address the board, please step to the podium, uh, give your name, your address, you have up to five minutes. Okay, being then, we'll move on to treasurer's recommendations. Jeff?
Item 2A is approval of minutes for Board of Education meeting for the, uh, meeting on November 16, 2015, regular meeting. Item 2B is approval of November 2015 financial statements and payments to vendors earning interest of $6,117.7. Our, uh, fund balances is general fund 24 million, 530,000. Bond retirement is a negative 220,000, I'll explain that in just a few minutes. Permanent improvements, 1 million, 190,000. Building funds, 100,000. Food services, 1 million, 380,000. OSSC project locals, 120,000. OSSC project state shares, 1 million and 610,000. Insurance funds, 3 million, 240,000. Classroom facilities, 2 million, 420,000. Missladies others, 490,000. Total, 34 million, 870,000, which agrees with the bank. The negative number, uh, in the, uh, in the bond retirement is because I went ahead and, uh, made the full payment for all of our indebtedness, which is the third page of your pass out, shows you where everywhere we had bonded indebtedness and we paid that, uh, which meant that when I went negative is that our collections was a little bit behind, so I've already talked to the county out of here about adjusting that, and they will adjust that in the next tax year so that that catches up and gets us back out in front where we belong. So, uh, but went ahead and paid the payment. With that, I think, uh, and we had the, had the, uh, uh, to fund an additional 100,000 for permanent improvement of 100,000 and special trust of $500, then I would ask for a vote on that, and then we'll move down each item one at a time, taking individual votes on the rest of the items.
So that was 2A through C?
Correct.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments? Discussion? Check call the roll, please.
Mr. Harden? Yes. Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Thank you for that vote. Item 2D is approval to participate in OSBA legal assistance fund. Uh, the cost of this invoice will be $250.
Motion so moved?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Item 2E is approval of annual membership dues of Ohio School Boards Association, as amounts to $6,996 for our membership in OSBA.
Second. Discussion?
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Item 2F is approval to increase OSHA tournament petty cash fund, uh, from 2,000 to 4,000. With our new foot, new turf on the football field, uh, we've got like three soccer tournaments, and we've got like two or three football, or vice versa. Anyway, we had five tournament matches, and just $2,000 petty cash fund wouldn't keep up with the payments that he had to make because we had something like on Wednesday, something on Saturday, followed Monday, duh, 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 duh. So we want to increase that to $4,000, so he won't go into panic when he's down to his last $50, and he's got to call us to get a check.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? That's not an expense, that's just-
No, it's a washout, we get reimbursed for every bit of that, it's just keeping cash flowing to pay officials and so forth. And the OHSA, as well as us, are in the process of automating all that, hopefully that will be in place by this time next year.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Item 2G is approval of resolution submitting to the electors of this school district, the question of the renewal of an existing 1% school district income tax. This is the only income tax that we've had, and it is a renewal again. I believe that this would be the fourth renewal of that 1% income tax. It generates about 5.3 million dollars, uh, or 8.3 million dollars for our school district each year. Without this school district income tax, we would be crippled, almost instantaneously.
And so moved.
Section.
Comments? Discussion? Just a reminder that it's a renewal, it's a renewal. No additional costs. Call the roll, please.
It is, uh, renewal, 8.3 million, that's 12% of our general fund budget. Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Thank you. And, what else do I have? I'm long-winded tonight. Uh, need to set your date and time and place for the organizational meeting. Has to be done before January 15th, meeting has to take place before January 15th. I think you previously talked about January 9th.
Yes, Saturday, January 9th.
Time starting?
4:00 AM.
Leave it, fix it. We'll call you.
Is it morning, 8:00 or 9:00?
I'd like 9:00.
9:00? Okay, so January 9th, 9:00 AM.
Ward, does that work for you? So again, that's Saturday, January 9th, work for you, works for me.
Okay, so somebody want to make that motion and second?
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Now you need to appoint a president pro temp for that meeting.
I nominate Tom Warren.
Can I discuss?
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
And let's see, now we got, uh, C addendum. We have needed temporary easement for the city of Newark. Basically, the easiest way to say it is around Wilson Middle School, they'll be doing, redoing the sewers and sidewalks and some blacktop work in there, and I'm just gonna say it's around Wilson School, we'll leave it that way. You want to see the details, I've got a map, I've got a drawing, I've got a very detailed, you can sleep a long time after you read that thing, okay? So if anybody wants to see that, they can come to my office, but that's basically where it is, is just around Middle School, so they can do sewer and sidewalk work like you've seen around the rest of the city. Temporaries will be for 18 months.
Come in.
Second.
Any discussion? So exactly, well, you have the details, but passing the, the road looks like to a high school, we have serious problems with parking and traffic. The board needs that.
Uh, Dave, all the Peters working with them on that. They've promised that that'll be taken care of and it should not be an issue, and I think primarily because they're not going to get up into our parking too much. It's basically from the curb, from the street to the ends of our property, but they'll have some equipment on it, they're afraid, you know, so they, to legally make it right, they've asked for an easement on that. But to actually shut down much of our park, parking, it does not look at that, it will be done in phases, so don't expect that. As a matter of fact, they're going to do some extra work for us, I'll call the barter train. Legally, we could have asked him for about $1,476 for this easement, uh, but our turn-ins to Wilson has been tight, and people's cutting it short, and exchange for us giving this easement for a dollar, they're going to redo that work when they have blacktop machines and, and stuff in there to widen that for, so it's basically trade. We, we couldn't have got, blacktop people even show up to do the work, probably, okay? Not for $1,400. Got a first and got a second?
Do you have a discussion?
They had a first by Mr. Carr and a second by Mr. Blowers for the temporary easement.
Get ready to call the roll.
All right. Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Then in my packet, on the very end of it, I just gave you something that was not on the agenda. Uh, it is basically the result of our internal audit, financial audit, and, long story short, it was a perfect audit with one management suggestion, and that suggestion has already been implemented, and that was to, that the supervisor of the cafeteria begin citing any, uh, cash refunds or receipts, and she's already started doing that, or any voided transactions. So it was a perfect audit for the Newark City Schools. No findings, no audit points. Don't need to vote on that.
I think we're so used to it, we don't really think about what that means anymore.
Yeah, I get concerned, I mean, they can look too easy, but it's not easy at all, I can tell you that.
I used to be on the other side of the audit, so I know.
It just takes an exceptional staff in the buildings, it takes an exceptional staff here in the office. They all know what they got to do, they all do a good job of it, and if they have questions, they call the right people at the right time, so it's the whole district's audit. It's not my audit, it's not the treasurer's office audit. Every building, it takes to do the right thing at the right time.
They obviously have been.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to superintendent's recommendations, that's-
Jeff, I compliment you and your staff on that on the audit. Very good. Under personnel, we have, uh, one staff member, first grade teacher from Cherry Valley, who will be resigning here, uh, at the, at the break, and her name is Molly Sargent. She would be, her husband took a job in another state, so obviously she's going to follow him. Lisa Weisman was hired 20 years ago in the food service. She's going to remain in the food service, uh, but she is, uh, or, she decided to give up to food service, I'm sorry, remained as a bus aide, so we appreciate Lisa's time from that, so. Under supplemental contracts, item four, uh, the recommendation to hire Alex Kovac as our head boy soccer coach. I want to thank John Quackenbush for all his time over the past few years. He, John's done a very good job and headed our, our soccer program in the right direction, and, and it's in very, very good condition right now, and Alex has been the assistant of with John for quite a while in that. So we have salary and position adjustments, uh, also the substitute list provided, and nothing under others, so items 1 through 8.
Motion?
Second.
Second?
He's got Mr. Harden since this is his last meeting.
Uh, any discussion, questions? Call the roll, please, Jeff.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Under students, uh, special education contracts with other districts are listed, and it's hit under section B.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
And receipt gifts, we appreciate the Energy Cooperative and their $500 donation as part of bringing, uh, Wayne Campbell and Tyler's Light Program in, talk about, uh, drug-free programs with our students at the high school, and so we, it's a great program, we appreciate the Energy Cooperative and their support, as well as Mr. Malotter's support in that program too.
It seems a little redundant to accept, the motion to accept a gift, but we do. So moved. Discussion? I want to make thank you?
Yep.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Okay, under Board of Education reports, the adoption of board policies. It is recommended the Board of Education adopt the policy listed below as shown in the appendix and as announced at the November 16th, 2015 Board of Education meeting. From the SALT Committee, file number. File number 8210, the school calendar. That's what's presented in the appendix. Do we have a motion?
He's so new.
Second. Any discussion, comments?
Just that would be to reiterate what Kurt said, another policy from the hardest working committee on the board, SALT Committee.
Highly correct.
Thank you, Warren. Thank you.
Yes, and we want you to remember, so.
Do you have policy for, or a list of board assignments to, I'll let you not that.
Okay, that brings us down to board discussion.
Not yet. Not until you vote on that. No, you got a first by Mrs. Nickam, a second by Mr. Harden.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we'll start at the board.
I pass.
Well, just the season to be busy with concerts. I'd like to congratulate all the directors and all the teachers, music teachers who are involved in, in the programs. I hope everyone gets a chance to go out and listen to the kids. Thank you.
Congrats to Owen Keith, student leadership. Thanks for being here. Kurt Harden, it's been a pleasure. I have learned a lot from you and enjoyed your wit and your wisdom.
Thank you. Who are you? I won't ask. I will simply say thank you to all of you. It's been wonderful serving with you all. This has been a great experience for me. And one comment I'll say as I leave, and I say this for the, for the audience of viewers. I tell people repeatedly, the issue we have with education so often is not, it's not the boards of education and it's not the local leadership, who I, in my four years, have found to be incredibly competent, caring people, hardworking people, too. It is, and this is sort of a repeat message from me, but it's the state legislators and the federal legislators who pass laws and just sort of pass them off. It's amazing. I served four years on the city council and it was nothing compared to the regulations without funding, by the way, that are passed to local school boards. So that what we spend our time do is adopting policies. And really, it takes away from the time that we could be spending making sure kids get better education. So my message is that. And this, next time you see a legislator, just tell him to stop messing with our education. And now I guess.
Jeffrey?
I have to thank Kurt personally because his timing on coming on the board couldn't have been better for me from leading the insurance committee. Because due to his leadership, due to his advice, to his counsel, our district is fully self-funded now. And I gotta tell you, I didn't know enough about it to direct us to get to that. I knew it was the right thing to do, the right place to go, but I wasn't comfortable to do it until he came on the board and was there for me to lean on real heavy and talking the insurance committee through that. Because of that, if you look at the last four years that he's been on this board, we've averaged less than 10% increase in our health insurance premiums for those four years. When other school districts that I talked to was getting 16, 17, 18% increases, we held ours below 10%. And I want to personally thank you for leading the district in that direction. Because I did not know enough to do it myself. I knew it was the right thing to do. But with him sitting there on my finance committee, which I thank you for, and being on this board, I was willing to step forward and do it and lead it with his pushing and leadership as we went along. So I do thank him for it. The whole district needs to thank you because he did save us money. It's part of the reason why we were able to give decent raises this past contract year, too.
And you still have his phone?
Yeah, but I still got his phone, huh? He wouldn't tell me where, exactly where he lives, though, but I got his phone right there. In honor of our three board members who have to get out to a concert tonight to watch their children. Kurt, do some duckles. Appreciate you, bud.
I'll just thank the students that were here, congratulate them. And beyond that, Kurt, thanks.
Thank you.
Keep a brief so you can get there.
Those are your dinner.
So moved.
Let's go. All favorites, yeah. All right. Good deal.
I'll see you in about 10 minutes.
Kurt, thank you.
Yeah, you going there, Tim? Okay, I'll see you there. So with the other three of you.
There you go.
Kurt, take a cookie. Do not hurt your.